...that this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
At this point, Todd, we'd like to take a moment of silent meditation. May we ask the good Lord to help those people that are unfortunate, especially with the heat and the way it's going on, that they're safe. It will be from San Antonio, San Francisco. "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reading of this for all." I'm glad.
Commissioner Ostino.
Here.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe's, excuse me. Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept a dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
So move.
Second. On favor.
Aye, aye.
By email correspondence, dated July 1st of 2025, the Monmouth County Board of Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Monmouth County Resolution 2025, Act 471, adopted on June 26th, 2025, opposing cow spill, H.R. 1, and Senate Agriculture Committee text impacting county governments with supplemental nutrition assistance program administrative and funding changes.
At this time, we're going to have a couple of presentations tonight. And the first one will be to honor students from C.C. Tech, okay, and J.A.C., the New Jersey Association of Counties are here. And we're going to be giving out scholarships to these individuals for how great they did in their studies at C.C. Tech. Up and coming, very well-known school throughout the state, because we keep winning the food thing. We had a cook, I know that, we had a cook. What I'd like to do is introduce Alan Weston. He's from NJAC, if you could come up. And Superintendent Dana Rossi. Yeah, right here. Would you come up, please?
Of course.
Okay. What we're going to do is have the individuals come up one at a time. And each one will say something. And I will stand by and just listen and hand you your certificate.
All right, well, thank you for having us. The following students are part of our recently graduated class of 2025. We graduated 246 students in that class. It's our sixth graduating class, which I can't believe. We're already on our sixth graduating class. And this begins the trend of increasing our class size. So our classes are only going to get larger and larger. So you're going to see a lot more of our students getting these wonderful scholarships. And thank you to NJAC for them. I would like to read a brief bio of these students and what they submitted to be selected for this NJAC scholarship. So the first one is NJAC courtesy of Amazon. And our award recipient is Marcus Harmon. Marcus is a dedicated and passionate student with a clear career goal to become an engineer. Initially drawn to math, Marcus discovered that engineering combines his love of numbers, critical thinking, problem-solving, and creating solutions that improve lives. Through his experiences in C.C. Tech's engineering program, he learned that engineering is not just about theory. It's about applying knowledge to address real-world challenges. Guidance from his teachers, including Ms. Goodman, Ms. Shaw, and Mr. Ziller, has inspired Marcus to explore diverse areas of engineering, such as physics, electricity, and environmental sustainability. Marcus is deserving of this scholarship because of his academic dedication, strong work ethic, and passion for solving complex problems. The lessons he has learned and the guidance he has received at Tech have equipped him with the skills and mindset to excel in engineering. With this scholarship, Marcus will continue his pursuit of innovative solutions that benefit communities and industries alike, making a positive impact through his future work in engineering. I'd like to congratulate Marcus Harmon.
Marcus, on behalf of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, we have proclamation here. And we have one from NJAC. And Alan, if you'd like to say something at this point in time.
I would just say it's a pleasure to be here. Apologize, executive director, for dominating, because what we generally do at NJAC is play defense. And so what was meeting tonight, the governor's office, about the 37% year-over-year increase in local health benefits plan versus local employees kind of invisible. So that's why I couldn't be here. But it's nice to be here for something positive, right? To reflect upon the investment the county has made in technical school and, you know, get to appreciate some of your standing experience.
And we appreciate NJAC for being here. Have them come on in.
I've got it right here. Perfect, thank you.
Congratulations.
The next scholarship is actually one of two that are provided by Investors and Citizens Bank. And our first recipient is Daniella Roman-Pocano. Daniella is a compassionate and motivated student with a clear vision for her future in healthcare. Through her volunteer work at a local medical facility, she has gained firsthand experience interacting with patients and has seen the importance of show of kindness and empathy during their most vulnerable moments, qualities she naturally embodies. As a student in the Health Science Medicine Program at Tech, Daniella has built a strong foundation in medical knowledge and skills over the past four years. Her academic commitment is further reflected in her dual enrollment coursework, including classes like medical terminology and legal and ethical issues in healthcare. These experiences have helped her understand the responsibilities and expectations of a nursing career. Daniella is a current member of HOSA, a club for future healthcare professionals, where she has gained additional insight into medical professionalism and leadership. As a first-generation college student, Daniella is determined to break barriers, achieve her dreams, and make a difference in the lives of future patients, especially children. Her academic dedication, hands-on experience, and genuine compassion make her deserving of this scholarship and a future nurse who will lead with both knowledge and heart. Congratulations, Daniella.
County Commissioners and, of course, the New Jersey Association of Counties. We honor you, congratulations.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the second recipient of the Investors Citizens Bank Scholarship is Mia Miller. Mia is a dedicated and compassionate student with a clear vision. She plans to become an early childhood education teacher, girl from her own heart, and later pursue her master's degree in school counseling. Her passion for working with young children comes from a deep desire to support their individual needs and help them navigate challenges they face in their education. Mia understands that every child learns differently. And as a teacher and future counselor, she aims to provide the guidance and support that will set her students up for success. Throughout her academic career, Mia has demonstrated exceptional commitment to her studies, earning consistent recognition on the superintendents list and principals list while maintaining a high GPA. Since her freshman year, she has set ambitious goals for herself, knowing that academic success will pave the way for her future. She is deserving of this scholarship because of her passion for education, her academic achievements, and her determination to help children thrive. With this financial support, Mia will be able to continue her journey toward becoming an early childhood education teacher and eventually a school counselor, where she will make a lasting impact on the lives of children and their future. Congratulations, Mia.
Commissioners and New Jersey Association of Counties, we honor you and congratulate you.
The next scholarship is provided by S.H.I. International, and it goes to Trent Garrison. Trent has always been drawn to technology, but his passion for computers truly came to life during high school. Growing up surrounded by devices, he became fascinated with how computers work, communicate, and connect people. With the support of his instructor, Carlos Morales, he gained hands-on experience in coding, computer building, and networking. These skills not only sparked confidence, but also ignited a strong desire to pursue a career in the field. What makes him truly deserving of this scholarship is his dedication to growth and resilience. Despite starting with less experience than some of his peers, he worked hard to master complex topics and never backed down from the challenge. He embraces the learning process even when it's difficult, because he understands that real progress comes from persistence. Trent has also developed the ability to learn independently, often going beyond classroom instruction to deepen his understanding. His passion, discipline, and drive to keep going sets him apart. This scholarship will allow him to continue his education and stay focused on achieving his goals in the area of technology. Congratulations, Trent Garrison.
Commissioners, of course, the New Jersey Association of Counties. Wish you luck and congratulations and honor.
Thank you.
There were two young men that were unable to join us because they are working. So I'd like to just mention them. South Jersey Industries provided a scholarship to Samuel Fiedro. And Sam plans to become a full-time residential electrician. He's actually working in the field right now as an apprentice and working on home maintenance, electrical setups, and installation. Obviously, he was in our construction trades program. So this will provide him an opportunity to continue in that field. And AT&amp;T provided a scholarship to Alejandro Cruz Perez. And his academic journey served as a bridge between personal ambition and professional goals. Each course he has taken shaped his perspective on the world and the role he hopes to play in it, especially his Spanish heritage class, which strengthened his sense of identity and revealed his potential to uplift others and drive meaningful change. The potential is now being transformed into purposeful action. With a deep interest in technology, he is particularly drawn to cybersecurity as the society becomes increasingly digital. So he's actually working in the technology field.
We're going to ask you personally somehow to congratulate both individuals on behalf of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and also the New Jersey Association of Counties.
I sure am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having the time. My pleasure.
And we got to get the Cumberland County back in the football, right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you know what? We actually felt bad when too many times.
You're dying, Mr. Ray.
Oh, yeah, that would be nice, okay. That sounds good. Group photo. Everybody, welcome. If we can do that.
Or behind me, behind.
Stand behind. See if we can... Ian, get the reanser. And... All right, how do we get them?
All right.
Can you see everything?
Yes, I can see everybody. Great, awesome, thank you. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. It's really great to be with our young people moving forward. And they have a whole life ahead of them. You can see how hard they work to get to where they're at right now. And I think every one of them is going to be a great student. We also have another presentation from Matt Pisarsky, planning. And before we even start, I just want to say that the planning department did a phenomenal job on what you're going to see. And they worked very, very hard on this plan. And I want to make sure that everybody knows, I think, I would say, I want you to say it yourself. We're the only county... Go ahead, I want you to say it.
We're the only county that has gotten 100% participation from our municipality by the county actually attending municipal meetings and meeting with all subcommittees of the 14 municipalities.
There you go. Let's give them a round of applause. Go ahead, Matt, you're in charge now, go.
All right, thank you very much, I'm Matt Pisarsky. This is Elena Gable from the county planning department. We just want to briefly go over the cross-acceptance process for the current draft state redevelopment and development plan. So a little bit of history. The last time this was done in the format we're seeing today was in 2001. So it's been several years, almost a quarter of a century, since the plan has been updated. The process that we have gone through so far is that the county planning board and planning department were identified as the negotiating entity for Cumberland County by the county commissioners in 2024. The draft state preliminary plan was released in December of last year. We worked with municipal partners starting in January of '25, actually before that, to secure subcommittee members from each municipality. And the official public meeting on the draft plan in Cumberland County was held on February 13th of this year. There are several goals in the plan, including economic development, housing, infrastructure, revitalization, climate change. I mean, practically every component that you can think of that would be impacted by planning is a component of the state plan. The... We completed what are referred to as cross-acceptance response templates or CARTs. You may hear that here and there as we work through this process. The county completed draft CARTs for every municipality in the county, all 14, as well as a county overarching CART. We met with all the municipalities through their subcommittees and through their planning boards. We do have 100% participation from all of our municipalities. A huge thanks to all of them for working with us throughout that process. We also completed the countywide CART. All of the CARTs and documents related to this process are on the county website. We'll show you that in a moment. The municipal CARTs have a variety of components, including analyses related to each of the goals of the plan, as well as mapping for each municipality. And then the county CART does a similar process, only it's more comprehensive for the entire county. And then our negotiating meeting was held with the state on July 9th. And that went very well. And I will pass it over to Elena.
And so I'm going to kind of touch base on some of the mapping that we did in preparation. So we did these maps for both the county and also for each of our individual municipalities. So the first map is the existing land use, and that is based upon tax assessment data as of January of this year. We also worked with all of our towns to kind of ground truth and correct any errors that there might be in the data set. We also took a look at the 2020 Land Use Land Cover data set layer that's available through state agencies. This took 2020 aerial imagery and essentially coded it in a way that assigns value to the pixel. So it breaks it down into a couple of major categories: agriculture, barren land, forest, wetlands, urban, and water. So it kind of gave you an idea of where there is existing development, where there are farms, where there might be some environmentally sensitive areas. And we also took a look at environmental features that would include floodplains, preserved open space, preserved farmland, and also wetlands. Going forward, we also looked at utilities. So where's their sewer service? Where are their water purveyor areas in the county? Also, on the other hand, where's the preserved land in the county? We also, as part of the assessment, we created a countywide zoning layer. We looked at each local zoning map for our municipalities and essentially assigned those zoning districts, general categories, to create a comprehensive zoning map for the overall county. The zoning map really became crucial in looking and comparing it to the planning areas assigned by the state. So we tried to keep it in general categories: agriculture, commercial, mixed use, industrial, public, or institutional lands, residential. Some towns have zoning for conservation districts. What else is there here? Some overlay and redevelopment areas. And then a couple of towns had some waterfront zoning. And then we went and looked at the planning areas, that's the last map, and made recommendations for changes based upon all of the other data from the other maps to see what the town's local policies are and what's being acknowledged and what isn't. And I'll get more into the planning area changes in a second. And so for overarching categories from the county cross-acceptance response template, these are some of our major points that we got across to the state: modernizing the electric grid. DEP regulations should reflect credit for state-owned land and open spaces. Support sewer expansion in the county. Provide funding for rehab of older housing stock. In doing this whole assessment, we noticed there's a lot of clusters of smaller hamlets and villages that aren't acknowledged. And most of those housing units in those areas are considered historic, being 50 years older. And so looking for recognition of that as well. Coordination with NJ Transit. We have some equity concerns regarding state-owned open space burning the tax base. I believe in downtownship, 80% of the tax base is owned by DEP, which is can be problematic for trying to, you know, balance out those rate pools. And also talking about down and ecotourism assistance, which do wonders in the county. Recognizing existing villages and hamlets to prioritize revitalization and infrastructure efforts. Equity to communities impacted by DEP regulations. Increase the inflexibility for local implementation. Include strategies for agricultural and resource-based economy. This comment was something we noticed throughout the state plan that some more language should be provided to help foster that kind of development. Transportation, infrastructure gaps. We also noticed that there's conflicting goals between the state plan and the affordable housing obligations. Plan endorsement process, we had some recommendations with that. The plan endorsement process has to do with center designation. And then also a last comment was reasonable time limits on state permits and approvals. That has to do with, you know, just the lengthy process that, you know, public entities have to go to to get approval. So for next steps, so as we mentioned before, we had a negotiation session with the state that went really well. So our role is more or less done at this point. However, I wanted to let you know that on July 30th, there will be an impact assessment that'll be released by the State Planning Commission and Office of Planning Advocacy. On August 6th, the Office of Planning Advocacy is going to release the draft statements of agreements and disagreements. September 10th, there will be a final state redevelopment plan. There's going to be public hearings in October, the majority of which that are going to be held virtually. November 26th, that's when the deadline for public comment ends. And then December, the State Planning Commission will approve the final plan. And then, starting next year, we'll be going into finalizing all of our proposed mapping changes.
So we do want to show you... Let's see if the link is going to work.
Yes. So... Oh, how... I saw you. Do I have to escape from this? There we go.
All right, so on the county website, there's the cross-acceptance page. And on the cross-acceptance page is a description of everything we've just gone through. And then all of the various CARTs for all the municipalities in the county. And then we actually created a map viewer.
And so when you click the link, this pop-up appears just to let you know that what you're looking at is looking at the existing state plan areas and compare it to what we're proposing. And so what we've done here is created this slider tool. So on... Let me get the legend on here, too. All right, so on this side is all of the existing planning areas. And as you slide it across, it'll show what we're proposing to change. So everything highlighted in yellow are our changes. And say up here in Deerfield, if you click on it, it'll show you that we're proposing to change it from a PA 4, which is the rural planning area, to a PA 3, that's a fringe. So trying to prioritize those areas for infrastructure in the future.
If you could just take a second to explain each one of those PA 1, 2, 3, 4.
Sure.
So everybody understand that. Because I think it's very important to explain why, if we go from a 4 to a 3, which is a fringe, why that's important for us, if you could do that.
Yes, so back in 2001, for those who were around at that time, one of the challenges for the state planning process is that they tended to blanket Cumberland County in more undevelopable areas. So they identified PA 4, which is rural, PA 5, which is environmentally sensitive. The pink on this map shows urban areas. There was not a lot of fringe. So the yellow would be suburban, and then the orange would be the fringe areas. In some cases, due to our, the way we historically developed with crossroads and hamlets and villages, a lot of times, they were not reflective in the state plan. So they would be blanketed as rural or environmentally sensitive. So what we've been trying to do with this process is to expand our areas that can be developed or are intended to be developed in the future, particularly around those rural communities. And to the greatest extent possible, either create fringe areas or suburban areas where appropriate to properly reflect the need of the current existing development and then the future need. So that's what we're trying to do with that map.
I think one of the things that we have to stress is that this is not just for now, five years from now, 10 years from now. One of the things we asked the municipalities and the cities to do, the townships, was to think way ahead, 15 years. I mean, this was 21 years in the making, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm able to work.
So we know that what will happen is they will hold us to this. So we were hoping that the cities, the townships, the municipalities would think ahead as to what was going to happen in the future. Where do you think you're going to be going in the next five years, 10 years, 15 years? So this way, the state can't say, well, we have this already designated as rural or highly sensitive. So you're not going to do it, or they're going to give you a hard time. So I think what they did, and I really think they did a hell of a job, they created a lot of fringe areas, which made it, you can still keep it sensitive if you want to keep it that way. But it's going to give you the opportunity to expand, okay? And that being said, I think that helps us out a lot in Cumberland County, because it never happened this way. They always tried to stop us, either rurally, conservation, environmentally sensitive areas, and we were never able to develop. And I think that doing this is going to help out a lot. Thank you, I just want to bring that up.
You're welcome. So it's all available. As I said, we had very good negotiation last week. I think out of... Oh, gosh, we probably went through 50 or more specific topics with them. I think there was a single disagreement out of the entire process related to something that was more impactful in the north part of the state than it was to us. Everything else, we've been working closely with the Office of Planning Advocacy to ensure that they understand our perspective as we move through this process. And I think that that's been working pretty well. I think that meeting last week went pretty well for us.
I, I was really, really happy with it. The whole team, by the way, that was one of the reasons why I wasn't at the opening fair, because I was at the meeting. A lot of questions came from our team. And I think we're the only ones that had that many questions or that many statements in the state of New Jersey, because you can actually track this. We questioned everything. We brought out, there was three pages of questions, am I correct? Was it at least three?
At least two.
If not four, then that, yeah. Okay. So, I mean, it was line item by line item. We went over every line item to get the message across as to where we would like to stand. Now, there were some areas where they turned around and said, well, we're going to have to come back to this. We understood to a certain degree, but it, it's the state, we've got to work with. But a lot of things, they acknowledged it. And then one of the things, I'll give you an example, is affordable housing. We got across on that. We had many, many houses in different cities that aren't being used. Affordable housing can't always be brand-new houses. Why don't we get houses that aren't being used, that are vacated, fix them up, and use them also as affordable housing and clean up an area? Doing that, we will actually make it nicer in some of our cities, in different areas of our cities. So they had to acknowledge that. And I, I think they're actually going to come back. I do feel that they'll come back and say that they're going to start allowing that. I, I do believe that. I mean, but these are only one of the, the things that we were talking about. But I, again, I commend you. Both of you have done a fabulous job, and I appreciate all the work you did. And it's, I'll, I'll open it up for questions, because that's how important this is. So if there's anybody here in the audience that would like to ask a question, please do.
I have a question. Did they, the, I see the Bay Shore, I see added sub-stuff. Would it happen right along the Bay Shore, they're going to allow more, uh, growth? We have shipping there. I mean, they draw lines that, that are impractical to have a, a shipbuilding, and they want it 100 feet or 200 feet off the water. You can't do that. So are they going to allow the, there's little hamlets or towns like Leesburg? Or are they going to allow them to grow to fit whatever need they're, they're going to be more open to that?
Well, that's, that's the proposal we made to them.
That's the fringe areas.
Those are the, right. And, and there are, so in those communities, some of those communities have centers designation, which is a different process. And we discussed that with them. And for instance, centers expire every 10 years. And we said, that's ridiculous. The process you go through to get a center designation, it should be permanent. They seemed dementable to that. So, so we, we advocated certainly for those communities. Now, we need to see what their response is going to be in the draft, in the final product. And then the specific mapping changes are occurring in 2026.
But even though they make the change, we still had a public, we can still have a public comment on their changes.
Right.
In other words, we, we submitted what we wanted, okay? And I think we got a lot through with what we wanted. But if they decide not to do it, we will still have a chance at public comment.
But even with public comment, they decide not to do it, they're not going to do it, are they?
Well, we can't twist an arm. I mean, I think, I think we made a major step forward, I really did.
And, and we've been, we've been very intentional in the way we've interacted with them throughout this entire process to ensure that we've been heavily involved in the process. We've been up there in Trenton. We've been communicating with them regularly. They understand our perspective. And all of that legwork was done in an effort to get our point across so that we get some positive response from them. We have to wait and see at the end, but I feel pretty confident that that method is going to result in some, certainly a middle ground will be reached between the two entities.
I, I hope, I don't share your enthusiasm, so I'm sorry. But because they, and I just reflect going to what meeting I attended that they, how they, well, this is what we're going to decide. I'm glad to hear that they, they listen to you. They, they, I see some differences in that. We have, we have a, our Bay Shore is just as important as the shore. And if we, it could be a small, a, a very productive, very, an economic boom or an economic zone as any other area in the state, but it's curtailed or handicapped because they just don't understand, let's just do this. And I'll, I'll give the perfect example, because I say all the time, and I, I put John Carl on the spot too, because he says that, you know, as each, as the votes that are offshore is barren compared to the eastern shore of Maryland. Eastern shore of Maryland and, and the Bay Shore are kind of, they always are, look the same, except they're not allowed to grow or be individuals, which I heard you say that, that, and become unique, unique as a, an area that it could be. And so I, I hope, I hope you're right. I hope that they will actually, and I, I have been through this process. 2001, you say, it, it was farther back than that, than they had a state plan that we designated areas, that this is what it's going to be. It was until they decided they made their own rules that don't fit what we agreed on. So, all right, so I'll be, I'll reserve judgment. I hope you guys, your positive stuff is great. And I hope it reflects all the things, the hard work you guys put into it, and our director, all the hard work we've put into it. I hope they take it, run with it, and allow us to be different and special than we are. So, thanks.
Well, thank you. And I think they certainly recognize that through our municipal participation rate. We, we are unique and special in South Jersey for that, if nothing else. So that was a big effort, and they acknowledged that in the negotiation session.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Okay, thank you so much, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to...
Do I have a motion in second? Have ordinance be read on first reading by title only?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2025-4, ordinance re-appropriating $2,385,774 proceeds of obligations not needed for their original purpose in order to provide for the expansion of the Cumberland County Technical Education Center in and by the county of Cumberland, New Jersey. Do I have a motion to move the ordinance on first reading?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Alstina.
Yes.
Commissioner Albeck.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sarr.
Yes.
Notice is hereby given that ordinance 2025-4 was introduced and approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland on first reading on July 15, 2025. It will be further considered for final passage after public hearing thereon at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be held at the Cumberland County Administration voting 164 West Broad Street in Bridgeton, New Jersey on Tuesday, August 19, 2025 at 6:00 p.m., prevailing time, at which time, if placed comments and objections to ordinance 2025-4 may be presented by members of the public. Do I have a motion in second to open public comment on resolutions only?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Anyone from the public that wish to come forward and speak about resolutions? Please do so, state your name and location.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Richaway from the Bredefield and Fairfield Townships. With resolution 2025-413, the resolution amending resolution 2023-559, resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant agreement for the middle mall broadband grant program and amending and supplementing resolution 2022-582. Now, in this resolution, it states that on July the 8th of '25, that we received notice of award by NTIA extending the project period end date to 12/31/2027. This is a shared service agreement with Cumberland County and Salem County for this $24 million grant from the federal government. And our share is between us and Salem County is $10 million. And what are we doing? I mean, the bead money went to Vielen and a city in Salem County and Salem County. Cumberland County didn't get the bead money. What are you doing? I mean, you've got two more years, or less than two years, to do this project to get broadband service down to the lower communities of Cumberland County. And you paid an engineer money, big bucks. We just extended his contract for a month to straighten everything out. And what's going on with this broadband? What are the people on the lower side of Cumberland County going to get broadband? Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to get up? Not seeing anything?
Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Well, first we close.
There'll be an answer?
Okay, first we close, and then we'll give the answer.
Okay.
Okay. We wanted to make sure nobody else wanted to come up and ask anything else.
Yes, Director. Basically, this, the purpose of this resolution is we, we, all, all grantees are offered the opportunity to extend the, the work period of the grant to fill full construction up to and including the end of December of 2027. So it's a year additional. There's no, there's no cost to the candidate, there's no charge purely, the resolution is purely stating that it, that it is giving us an additional year to complete the project at this point. That's, that's all the resolution posted.
No cost.
No cost.
There you go, thank you. Okay.
Department head comments?
Pardon?
Any department head comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, any department head comments? Anyone that would like to come up? All right, Madam Clerk, here, if you can yell into your phone. We can, because I don't know how to...
I'm going to do my very best.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, good afternoon from sunny Kansas City, Missouri, where I am at the National District Attorneys Association Summer Summit. Thank you for allowing me to attend. I was just elected president-elect, so next year I will be president of the National District Attorneys Association. So thank you for that. Otherwise, I won't be there.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you so much. On resolution 2025-397, which is a change order to award an additional $17,500 to Life Worth Living on our CC Inc. grant. Our CC Inc. grant stands for Cumberland County Identify, Notify, and Care. It is an initiative to case manage and get the best outcome for the 50 most at-risk juveniles in Cumberland County. The grant award was for $543,000 when we received it almost five years ago. And the grant ends on September 30th, 2025. So we just have a couple months to use the rest of the money in the grant. Originally, Life Worth Living was awarded $145,530 to case manage the 50 most at-risk youth. I did provide you, Director, with an update. We have touched 77 youths, similar case managing, 77 youths, which accounts for 3,442 hours. So currently, with the amount being $162,560 that has been awarded to Life Worth Living, because we did do a change order sometime last year, we have spent $47.22 per hour. We have case managed 77 youths. We have done 77 youth assessment, 60 family assessment, 107 case plans, because that kids progress, you update their case plans. We've done 96 social service referrals and 128 pro-social activity referrals. And when I talk about those social service referrals and pro-social activity referrals, please understand when we refer the youth and their family to existing resources in our community, there is not just, oh, go here. It's taking us by the hand, making the contact with the agencies that we're referring them to so that they get those services. In addition, more recently, Life Worth Living has collaborated with the Healing Den to do six sessions specifically with young ladies, because we are seeing enough in juvenile crime with young ladies. And they have created a junior credible messenger program, and four youths have graduated from that code program. So I am asking you to approve an additional $17,500, which would make a 23% increase from the $145,530 we originally contracted with them for 50 youths. It was an educated guess on how much and how much time we would be spending with these youths. Finally, to put this into context, you may say that $180,000 is a lot of money. Today, I just checked the count. We have 19 juveniles detained in detention, except for two that are there for bench warrants. The balance of them are there for conspiracy to commit murder, murder, gun offenses, aggravated arson. I currently have four juveniles waiting to adopt court. And we, in that 19 juvenile figure, and we are currently in the process, process of waiting several more. Now, I don't know what the exact rate per day for each juvenile is, but Chris Hart, please correct me if I'm wrong. I would venture to say it's probably at least $300 a day. He can tell you if I'm wrong. But if I'm correct, that means that each day, we are spending currently right now $5,700 for the 19 youths that we have in detention. That comes out to $171,000 per month. So every youth that we case manage, every youth that we get referrals for, because these are the youths that are the most at-risk, most dangerous in our community. They are referred to by the school districts, guidance counselors, social service agencies, DCP and D. Every one of those youths that we, we get to stay out of detention, they discount the money and is a drop in the hat to the amount we pay when they have to be detained. I give a rough calculation. If you award this change order tonight, Life Worth Living will have received $180,000 through September 30th, 2025. That's 31 months. That comes out to $5,806 per month. In comparison to the $5,700, and that's a rough estimate of what we're spending per day to contain these children. So I respectfully request that you grant my request to do this change order, which will take us down to almost nothing with this grant. I have this firm belief that in the poor county in New Jersey, that I should leave no money that I receive from either the state or the federal government by way of grant on the table, and I should maximize it to the benefit of the citizens of Cumberland County. So I respectfully requesting that you grant my change order and award this last $17,500 so that we can, over the summer, do a hard, hard push to continue to help these kids. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
And if there's anything, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I have a question. The paperwork, the, you mentioned all these cases have been handled. All that's up the bar. They, this organization has been detailed enough to provide all this information to you. The processes office, they're ready in this, they basically grabbed it. Did they complete everything that they were supposed to do? Highly...
Commissioner, I will tell you that Tracy Smart, my public safety reform strategist, is on the, so caught as well. You know that I have been doing this for 15 years. I, I'm not bragging, but I'm very good at paying grant money for the benefit of this county. And I, you know, am very careful to make sure... I'm not bragging, but I'm very good at paying grant money for the benefit of this county. And I, you know, am very careful to make sure that we monitor bills, that we make sure that we cross our teams and dot our i's, because I want to stay in good stead with the federal government and the state government so that I can continue to get grants. And I can tell you that throughout my fifteen years of doing this, I have never been, you know, you get audited, and they either say you have a good audit or a bad, and I've never been ventured, and I continue to get grants.
I don't have questions.
My reputation on the line when it all says is done, and we make sure that we check our bills and we cross our teams and dot our i's.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Prosecutor.
Thank you so much.
We have Sheriff.
Good evening. And Prosecutor, congratulations on your nomination. My name is Mike Donato from the Sheriff's Department, and I would just like to go out and say to the County Fair Association for a very successful, yet again, event that they had. The County Fair Association put a lot of work into that, basically year-round for those several days. Unfortunately, they just seem to draw the rein sometimes, but they make the best of it, and that's just been historically, no matter what weeks, I think, that they've had it. But they did a phenomenal job in what they had to work with, only lost that one night per se. But it was a pleasure working with them again for the security plan that we had in place, also the Public Works and the Forage Program, outstanding job that they did. I mean, the grounds are amazing. And a shout-out to the Board of Commissioners for the work that they've been putting into that, the fairgrounds the past couple of years. I would also like to thank Chief Jamie Potego from the Bridgestone Police Department, Chief Ross Hoffman from the Mogo Police Department, Chief Torantos from Vineland Police Department, Chief Darren Pullman from the Prosecutor's Office, Sheriff Chuck Miller from the Salem County Sheriff's Department. All those agencies assisted us with officers that we were, they brought in from the various agencies to help us out each night of the week to make sure that the fair was a very safe place for many people to enjoy. And I say many people, because at times, there was probably several hundred people waiting in line to get into there. And everybody was happy, there was no, and I'm happy to report that there was no issues out there other than a few lost parents, which was quickly located. And again, not to rule out, but the state police, both the Bridgestone and Portinore Station, didn't have anybody assigned out there, they weren't needed at the time, but were readily available if something were to happen with their response. So just again, thank you to the Fair Association, County Public Works, the Commissioners, the Forage Program, for another successful year.
Sheriff, all I've heard was stellar comments about you and the organization, your officers, and everything that you planned out, including the other agencies that you already mentioned.
Yeah.
We just want you to know that I've heard nothing but great comments in everything that you guys did, and really appreciate what you did, because that's what made it safe for us. And that's how people enjoy the fair, because they don't have to worry about anything else. So we really appreciate everything you did, and all the agencies that you contacted and had helped you.
Thank you.
Any other department head? See none? We have motion for, we don't need a motion for, okay? Move on.
Resolution 2025-362 was a motion that was tabled at the June 24th meeting. Resolution authorizing sub-grant agreement with the Cumberland County approving authority to the communities program. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
Ask a question, Director?
Yes.
The reason why it was tabled...
You said the word, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no. You want to add? If you have, that's what we had.
I thought this.
Sorry. But it's, what we asked about, the reason why we did it, was to ask them to, they're putting stuff out, please put our vote on. That was all the reason. Recognize the county to be a part of it. And you've had a discussion with them.
We've had discussions. We've had discussions. I feel strongly in this will be resolved.
So we vote on this day that you believe this is gonna be, that we're gonna have, I'd still bring it to be, but you believe it's gonna happen no matter what?
I believe it will.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sarr.
Yes.
We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Resolution 2025-387. Resolution awarding a contract for consulting services for the development and implementation of the County Option Hospital Program, RFP number 25-24. Resolution 2025-388. Resolution awarding contract for supplying and delivering drainage pipe materials for the Cumberland County Department of Public Works, bid number 25-23. Resolution 2025-389. Resolution awarding contract for providing tree trimming and removal services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181 CC, CCPS, bid number 25-26. Resolution 2025-390. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the purchase of three hundred and twenty Brigands gas gift cards. Resolution 2025-391. Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the maintenance services for the Inca Share Case Management Assistant for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Resolution 2025-392. Resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for one 2025 Ford Estate Active Four-Wheel Drive, All-Wheel Drive with factory and dealer options. Resolution 2025-393. Resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for providing and delivering washed aggregate for the Cumberland County Public Works Department, bid number 24-28. Resolution 2025-394. Resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for supplying and laying mixed asphalt for the Cumberland County Public Works Department and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181 CC, CCPS, bid number 24-28. Resolution 2025-395. Amendment to Resolution 2024-552. Resolution authorizing a subaward agreement with InSphera Medical Centers Incorporated, Cumberland County, New Jersey Youth Violence Cessation Initiative Program. Resolution 2025-396. Resolution approving budget amendment, Cumberland County, New Jersey Youth Violence Cessation Initiative Program, additional fifty thousand dollars. Resolution 2025-397. Resolution approving change order number two to contract for providing comprehensive credible messenger youth anti-gang identification, notification, and mentoring program for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, RFP number 22-52, resubmission. Resolution 2025-398. Resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for supplying and delivering VOC compliant high-performance coal patch for the Cumberland County Public Works Department and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181 CC, CCPS, bid number 24-26. Resolution 2025-399. Resolution authorizing grant application to the New Jersey Office of Attorney General for sub-grant under the FFY 24 Victims of Crime Act Grant Program. Resolution 2025-400. Resolution approving budget amendment workforce innovation and opportunities, seven million nine hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Resolution 2025-401. Resolution approving budget amendment, WIIOA data reporting and analysis, twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Resolution 2025-402. Resolution authorizing application for renewal of the County Human Services Advisory Council Grant for Grant Contract, number 26S00042. Resolution 2025-403. Resolution approving budget amendment, Human Services Advisory Council Grant for Grant, sixty-seven thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. Resolution 2025-404. Resolution approving budget amendment, Work First New Jersey Grant, five hundred and nine thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Resolution 2025-405. Resolution declaring various computer equipment from the Division of Employment and Training as surplus and unneeded property and authorizing recycling as e-waste. Resolution 2025-406. Resolution declaring various electronic equipment from the Cumberland County Department of Veterans Affairs as surplus and unneeded property and authorizes recycling as e-waste. Resolution 2025-407. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing inspections in accordance with the NJDEP for seven dams located in Cumberland County, re-qualified per RFQ number 24-39, as needed general architectural and engineering consulting services contract awarded by Resolution 2024-983. Resolution 2025-408. Resolution amending Resolution 2025-313, awarding contracts for providing supportive services for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services/Human Services Advisory Council, RFP number 25-14. Resolution 2025-409. Resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing collision repair and vehicle painting services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181 CC, CCPS, bid number 24-27. Resolution 2025-410. Resolution authorizing grant application to the New Jersey Office of Attorney General for a sub-grant under the FFY 24 Stop Violence Against Women Act Grant Program. Resolution 2025-411. Resolution approving budget amendment, fiscal year 25 Local Efficiency Achievement Program Fellowship Grant, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution 2025-412. Resolution authorizing distribution of the County Prosecutor's Law Enforcement Trust Funds to the City of Inland. Resolution 2025-413. Amendment to Resolution 2023-559. Resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant agreement for the Middle Mile Grant Program and amending supplementing Resolution 2022-582. Resolution 2025-414. Resolution amending Resolution 2015-443. Resolution shared services with the Ruptors Cooperative Extension, part of Ruptors, the State University of New Jersey. Resolution 2025-415. Resolution authorizing interdepartmental agreement between the Cumberland County Department of Human Services and the Cumberland County Division of Employment and Training. Resolution 2025-416. Resolution authorizing shared service agreement with Bergen County for the revision of juvenile housing. Resolution 2025-417. Resolution revising acquisition cost and cost sharing breakdown and authorizing other revisions based on the statewide farmland preservation formula of the Holton Farm Application to Self-Development Easement. Resolution 2025-418. Resolution revising the acquisition cost and cost sharing breakdown and authorizing other revisions based on the statewide farmland preservation formula of the Taylor Farm Application to Self-Development Easement. Resolution 2025-419. Resolution revising the acquisition cost and cost sharing breakdown and authorizing other revisions based on the statewide farmland preservation formula of the Brooks Farm Application to Self-Development Easement. Resolution 2025-420. Resolution revising the acquisition cost and cost sharing breakdown and authorizing other revisions based on the statewide farmland preservation formula of the Farmer Farm Application to Self-Development Easement. Resolution 2025-421. Resolution revising the acquisition cost and cost sharing breakdown and authorizing other revisions based on the statewide farmland preservation formula of the SF Systems Company Farm Application to Self-Development Easement. Resolution 2025-422. Resolution authorizing agreement between Cumberland County, Cumberland County Department of Aging and Disabled, and the Parish of All Saints Church for the use of the Parish All Saints Church Community Center for the Memory Cafe Program. Resolution 2025-423. Resolution consenting to temporary closing of County Road 615 South and County Road 615 North on July 26, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on July 27, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. for the 59th Annual Puerto Rico Re-Recon Festival. Resolution 2025-424. Resolution authorizing shared service agreement with Vineland for North Brewster Road drainage improvement. Resolution 2025-425. Resolution approving members of the Recreation Commission. Resolution 2025-426. Resolution approving change order one to contract for providing various social services for the homeless for the County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 24-58. Resolution 2025-427. Resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various social services for the homeless, Puerto County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 24-58. Resolution 2025-428. Resolution canceling expired contracts for July 2025, covering materials, services, and supplies. Resolution 2025-429. Resolution authorizing purchases from the state contract menders. Resolution 2025-430. Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Okay. Any questions on that? I have a couple of questions on two of them, but that's great. I haven't heard anything else. You have any questions?
I just got a question on 2025-408. For the last three to four years, I've been talking about why do we have to continue to send vehicles out to get repair all the way to Bellmark, New Jersey? And the time that we spend in transporting and the money and employees, do we have any body shops, make it simple, in Cumberland County that could do this work? That's all I have to say.
Well, that was one of the questions I had. I mean, did anybody from Cumberland County do this?
I didn't see the result of this.
I know.
I mean, we can't...
I don't know for this job, you know, I don't know if they are, we are, we need to reach out.
And you're exactly right, Commissioner. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, and now I'm gonna bring it out publicly, and that is, we need to have a class. We've talked about this. I want this expedited, all right? We need to have a class. We want to contact vendors, tradespeople in Cumberland County. Bring them in, teach them how to bid, teach them what it takes, show them what it, I had done this one other time early in the 2000s, and it worked for a while, somehow we got away from it. I think it's very important that we show them. A lot of people are afraid to bid because they're afraid working with the government, and that's absurd. So what we have to do is, we literally have to put on a class, bring the individuals in, and show them the paperwork, and if we have to take it step by step, so they understand the process. Because Commissioner Romero is correct, you know, why are we going to Bellmark? Now, I understand the process. You send it out, they don't bid it, you can't force them. If somebody else wins it, you gotta give it to them because they're low. I understand the process. But now, let's start making it to where the individuals in Cumberland County have a fair shot at this, okay? And I want to really do something, we want to talk about it this week, please, all right? I know Commissioner Albrecht has questions. Oh, wait, but before, if you don't mind, Commissioner, there's another. It was my understanding that we would have somebody here to explain the gift cards? Is that true or no?
Yes, Jamie Gomez.
Okay. I'd really like to understand and see how secure this is, so it's just not happening and not just putting out money from the county and, well, I want to make sure it secures what it comes down to.
Also a description, also a description of the program.
Yes, please do that.
Sure. Good evening, Jamie Gomez, Director of the Division of Employment and Training. So these gas cards come from a lot of different funding sources. One of the main ones is from the Cumberland County Human Services through the Human Service Advisory Council. They give us money to buy Uber cards, which you voted on last month, and gas cards. So those are, we receive referrals from community agencies who already vetted families and individuals who need this assistance. So for that particular program, we don't have eligibility criteria. What we do have is our community partners who have their eligibility criteria, and they have vetted the people to make sure that they need the service. For our other grant programs, we have training and employment programs, and they, and we purchase cards so that individuals can get to training programs or to employment. All of our services are really eventually to get people into employment. So once, if they go into a training program or they have the employment, these cards help them for their first month or whatever to get to employment. So those, that eligibility is very, it's grant-specific. So it's things like low income, basic skills deficient, veteran receiving social service benefits, so those programs have eligibility. We keep track of everything, everything. We have a process in place that everyone who gets a card, we have to show that they are a Cumberland County resident. We have an application process. We take photocopies of the cards and have them sign off that they receive them. We track all of that stuff, so...
Do you track if they come to the training? I mean, you know, let's say they start missing the training and they're still using the card. So do you track that and base it against a card or no?
So with the human service grant, we allow two times them to come back and get cards. That's a very short-term process. We don't ask them, we have, they don't necessarily tell us what they're gonna use it for, but we don't track what they use it for.
And I mean, you're back then coming to, in other words, you're giving them the card in order to get training, can we track and make sure that they're coming to the training?
Oh, absolutely. There are customers who have case managers who are very intimate with their particular case.
All right.
Do we also supply these people with kind of information like cash programming, all the ways of transportation?
Absolutely.
In Cumberland County?
Actually, Employment and Training has our own transportation service, the To Work Transportation Service, but that is, that's limited, that's in the morning, in the afternoon, it's not viable for every person to get to work and to different training programs. So this is a, this is a go-between, this is what our other services can't provide that we will then provide in this card.
It's only a short-term, a short-term.
It's a short-term fix for a very long-term, broad problem. Any other questions?
Melissa, it seems like you'd like to say something.
So, hi, Melissa Niles, I'm the Department Head for Human Services. I just wanted to provide a little bit more information about the human services role in this initiative. So Cumberland County is the only county that receives additional funding every year. We receive $320,000 from the Department of Children and Families for the purpose of trying to improve the conditions for children and families. And one of the requirements is that we have some sort of transport, to try to solve these social problems and include transportation. So the gift card, I will say that Jamie, it's very, it's, you know, it's very detailed, and the point of the, giving out the gift cards or the gas cards is to help the families, like maybe the parent needs to get to work or something like that. You know, we're trying to do the best we can. We've tried before to contract with transportation provider, and we used to do that, it cost us $120,000, and the way it was written, we paid them just to have the lights on during the day regardless of if they transported them or not, but I did away with that because that's not efficient. So allowing people to have the opportunity, because another program that we also have people with substance use disorders who are trying to improve their recovery capital, Jamie's office also handles those for us. And it's very, it's, believe me, the state is on us, they are very serious about tracking gift cards, we have everything down to the penny, I can guarantee you that, and it's very important because our options for transportation are limited, and it is a short-term solution, but it's what we have, so, thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Does anybody else have a question?
Five years ago?
Yeah, we've been doing it for a long time.
Okay.
We're ready to go on to the next initiative for transportation, whatever that is.
We'll go on. Did you have a question?
Not for that, I have something else.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we have Barbara Netahan come up and just talk briefly about Resolution 422 on the memory cafe?
Ms. Nambur, would you please come up?
Good evening, Barbara Netahan, Department Head for Thelpson Aging. First of all, I thank you for passing that resolution for a memory cafe. It is a new initiative in our office to be able to provide caregivers of a loved one with cognitive disorder such as Alzheimer's or dementia. It's going to be held once a month, and the programming is going to be geared toward activities that will really help with the isolation that some of these people feel, because when you're caring for someone with Alzheimer's or a dementia situation, sometimes it's very difficult to go out and be with other people. This way, we're bringing people together, they can have conversations, it's people that are having, going through the same problems that they are, so they can have those discussions. We're going to have activities planned toward, you know, the fatback group. We have a music therapist already scheduled, we're working on getting art therapy into the program, so we're building it. It's a new initiative, it's, as far as I know, we haven't found any in New Jersey, I don't think we found any memory cafes in New Jersey, but they are, they started in the Netherlands, I believe, but it is something, Alzheimer's and dementia are, is something growing as the population gets older, the increase in aged population and dementia and those cognitive disorders are becoming more prevalent, so we're trying to expand the programming that we have to help a little bit, because there's not a lot of, I mean, I know I have gotten calls from several commissioners looking for additional services for people with Alzheimer's and dementia, so we're trying to expand new services.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Taylor, you have anything else?
No, I just wanted Barbara to talk about that, so we get the word out there. I think it's a very important, worthwhile thing to do for our county.
Mr. Albrecht, on this, I got to think, the social aspect of that, I always remember my grandmother couldn't move very well, but I could sharp by, but I remember her, you know, basically by herself, most of the time, I mean, not by herself, but in her own apartment, but the comfort of life, all of a sudden, like someone, a company or would stop over, like, if someone hit the person, then it's like, wow. So I think that's going to be wonders, that despite being around people, it pushes them to focus and what they can do. And I hear you just said art therapy, music, that all touches, and so it's really, I know it's going to be successful, and I hope to expand it, because we have senior centers all over the county, and not just, I guess, just start here, and hopefully it can be bridged off into places, because we definitely have a need, so.
And I want to thank Lisa Williams, my assistant, she's a certified dementia therapist, is that what?
Dementia care practitioner.
Care practitioner, so she brings a lot to the table when it comes for the memory cafe and everything that we're going to do with that.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Albrecht.
At the start, well, I'll just start with number, I'm glad the, starting with the human services, I'm pretty full of money again and upgraded a little bit, I know they've had issues, so they've cobbled money together to get a vehicle out, it's kind of, you know, everybody got to, it's not always everybody, it's needed, and I'm glad we're upgrading along with the, I remember the bus, the dedication to the bus, that it goes around, so we're covering on wheels, so I'm upgrading that, I really think it's needed, so. The prosecutor's, this is number 11, resolution, I have my reservations, I trusted about a prosecutor, I know she does a lot of things, reaches out, and she's going to stay on top of, that was the one big question I had, is that are they doing the paperwork that's needed, are they doing the documentation, and she, I trust what she says, I know she stays on top of that, and she's, I have no issue with it, and she's vouching for it. I would like to know more about the success or what's happening with, as they help these individuals, how successful they are, the correlation between helping these, and I don't know how dire it is to be in our juvenile detention center, that I'd like to see a little more, that hey, if we don't do this, here's what happens, and I guess it's, there's people, I guess you catch this, well, I'd like to see that data, that we're catching this. I know that much, but I would like to know more, so. I second Commissioner Romero, the director, about this, sending out this collision repair out of the county. We have plenty of people here, and I've mentioned to them about bidding, and they're interested, but they don't do the first steps, so I'm glad the director's saying that, I would like it to stay, every dollar spent here gets spread out elsewhere in our community, the local baseball teams, the local sports, the wrestling program, all that benefits when a business can be successful, so I, it's needed, and I'm glad you're going to push I'm glad Mr. Ridgeway brought up the, about the Middle Mile stuff, it's going to be discussed, but it's just an extension of the program. There are, what she says, that there are other cities that are qualified for a B buddy, yes, we're not pursuing that. It's the, even Petville has no fiber optic, got B buddy. The city of Iowa's class, and so is the, I think, over $20 million given to the sale of the county. Yes, we're not in the game with that, but so, but we are going to renew it, you said one more year, we're renewing it, which is needed to just continue to see what we can do. So I appreciate her raising that issue. I, this is resolution, this is number 29, resolution 415. I'm glad, I appreciate the, and I said silos, I appreciate that departments working outside of silos to help each other, I'm sure it's not the first time, but the working together, and it's not just stuff by these departments, I do, there's several other ones, DOTS, the World Development, working together to try to solve issues. I really appreciate them doing that. They all talk, which is neat, because you're all really tackling the same problem from different directions, but it's good to see that, so, and this reflects it. All the farmland preservation stuff, I see that the agreement was made, and then I guess they changed the numbers, and they said, well, I really want more money. I don't fault them for wanting more money for the land they invested in over time, so I, all these things being updated, the amount of money, I realize the land is more valuable now than it's been, the past inflation, all that stuff, our farmers deserve the cash in what they have, so. That's, I was thinking, I don't worry, I just, I saw it, I, that they were agreeing, I, the, again, I've already made a comment about the memory cafe, I think that's a great issue, but I hope it gets, grows, and becomes better. The Puerto Rico Festival is a big thing in this county, I think we're going to have another festival, fairgrounds later, but the traditional one in the city of Iowa is amazing, and how, and actually this idea closed at the Boulevard, at first I was a little suspect it was not the traditional route, but after walking, it actually comes, it's really kind of neat, because I work, I'm too far from the Boulevard, I go down that route every day, it doesn't have any life, and now there'll be, there's plenty of life that day, it's amazing how it comes to life, and.
We're going to have a float guest for you.
Yes.
The, now, this is, sounds kind of off the wall, but it's going back 10, 12 years, this is 424, this is the drainage, the agreement, the shared agreement with the city of Iowa and the county for Brewster Road, major, major issues there, drainage, it's been, and really, and I'll just blame, or always will blame, the DP that was wetlands when it was started, I don't know how they ever got the ability to build it, but I stood in the basement, the water was almost this high to my shoulders, and the people couldn't understand why there was so much water in their basement, well, when you build on wetlands like they did, this happens, but that's years ago, many people were watched, basically flooded out, the water has no place to go, and by agreeing to do this finally with the city of Iowa, stop, hopefully solve a problem of water where it really should go away, I, it's actually, no one really knows how deaf, but I've many times stayed in and looking at the homeowner, their whole backyard is as high as this desk with water, it's tough, so, so I'm glad. I do want to say for the appointment of the Recreation Commission, Commissioner Sandy Taylor brought up that she wanted someone different, that someone a little, even though the two gentlemen that are still on here do a great job in their respective areas, Chris Wilson and J.D. Burke, Heidi DeBart, DeBart, I don't want to butcher her name, Heidi is so different, and brings so much to, won't bring so much to the Recreation Commission, I'm really glad to have her, and you guys are the raise on the Recreation Commission, I think you'll be excited that she's part of that group, because she brings different stuff. She was a pro wrestler at one time, that's all different, but she's into fitness, and I think that's what you ask for, so, she's excited to be part of it, I'm glad finally we bring her to the table. The next one, which sounds kind of weird, is the change from the Catholic, the money being moved in different organizations. For the last three weeks, I've been talking about homeless issues and working for, and when you talk to people that have no option, no, they don't know where they're going to, they can be homeless the next day because they don't have, something happened, they got sick, they lost their job, and they're looking for a job, and then you don't have an organization that the county depends on, able to fulfill or do what they intended they were supposed to do. It's, and they, people are calling, yeah, they'll get back to you, no problem, they'll be, but that doesn't happen, it's tough, it's very tough. So I commend that they made the change, not the bash, just they had circumstances, weren't right, they should have told us or let us know, so I'm glad we're moving resources over to where it can be used, it helps people, I've already told people that it'll be there, so it's a minor thing, but it's a major thing, that hopefully some people come out that will be able to be helped, and help quicker than they're being helped now, so, and I, this, okay.
Commissioner, with the body shop and the gas card and range are so applied. Thank you so much. Okay, now that we've gone two lanes out, but we have a vote.
Do I have a motion in second to vote by consent and done to our resolutions 2025-387 through 2025-340?
So maybe.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro. Do I have a motion in second to adopt resolutions 2025-387 through 2025-430 by consent? Do I have a?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro. Do I have a motion in second to accept the treasurer's report as provided?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment on new business in Cumberland?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Anyone that, in the public that would like to come up and talk about anything new, any new issues, please step forward and state your name and location.
Good evening, again, this is Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. And this says, public comment period slash new business, and I would like to go back to resolution 2025-413, resolution authorizing the acceptance of and the execution of the grant agreement for the Middle Mile, which is going to go through 2027, I believe I said earlier. If we do not use this grant money in this time period, will this grant money be returned? Another question is, there was an email sent to put a hold on the construction of the shared service agreement for a regional jail with Cumberland, Salem, Gloucester Counties. Has anything been happening with that? Are we stopping this jail project by resolution? Or what's going on with the regional jail project? And Mr. Albrecht, I thank, or Commissioner Albrecht, I thank you for all of your questions and comments this evening, presently. And I thank you for bringing up about people's yards being flooded with water. And my yard is being flooded with water by no action of my own, it was by action of the county. And I'll have you know that years ago, I used to get alerts on my phone from the National Weather Service saying that there was small stream flooding. And now I'm being flooded without being notified by the National Weather Service. And that just tells me that your engineering department never told the National Weather Service or NOAA that they changed the depth of the stream. You ought to look into that, thank you.
Next.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Millie Vazari, and I stand before you today, not just as a proud Cumberland County resident, but as a passionate educator, entrepreneur, community advocate, mother, and someone who truly believes in the power of cultural unity and opportunity. I want to begin by offering my sincerest thanks to each and every one of you for believing in a vision that many said was too ambitious, too bold, or simply too late. Because of your support in the grant you approved via Cumberland County Cultural and Heritage Commission and New Jersey State Arts, Fiesta Borinqueña 2025 is no longer just a dream, it's now a reality. Thanks to the funds you awarded, we were able to reinvest directly back into the county by securing the Cumberland County Fairgrounds as our official venue for August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. This isn't just an event, it's a historic statement. It's a declaration that our community is vibrant, deserving, and capable of hosting something meaningful on a grand scale, and for everyone. As someone who teaches sound recording and content creation summer camp to the youth in Bridgeton alongside United Advocacy Group and the Hope Loft, a lifelong resident of Ireland, active realtor throughout the county and New Jersey State, and who runs a bilingual public relations company called Global Media Society, I've had the unique blessing of working in all corners of this region. And everywhere I go, one thing remains true, our youth need hope. They need representation, they need safe spaces to celebrate who they are and where they came from, and we are proud to be a resource. Fiesta Borinqueña is more than just music, food, and dancing. It's about reclaiming history, it's about honoring our roots while building bridges for future generations. And for the first time in almost 60 years, Cumberland County will host a county-wide Puerto Rican festival, and that really matters, which is why I want to personally and formally invite each and every one of you to join us for a flag raising and ribbon cutting ceremony at the fairgrounds on August 1st at 12 noon. We will be honored to share this powerful moment with the very first people who believed in us and who gave us the opportunity to make it all happen, and that is you, each and every one of you. We are forever indebted to you and your trust and support. From the bottom of my heart, on behalf of myself, my team, and the entire community, thank you for helping us create something that will echo across for generations. We hope to see you there, standing beside us as we raise our flag and open the gates to something historic. Muchas gracias, and thank you so much, but before I go, a word from my daughter, the youth.
Hello, my name is Tylinne Milk, and I'm 17 years old, and I would just like to highlight the fact that this festival is truly a moment for people within this county, within other counties, and even coming outside of the state, to come together and just join and be with people who all together appreciate our heritage and are willing to have a safe space to celebrate. We will be having an art exhibit where the youth is encouraged to bring in their art, we have the youth that'll be performing, singing, dancing, and it's just a way of encouraging the youth to celebrate who they are, where they come from, and be with people who will support them and who will continue to pave the way for better and brighter futures, and just to gather more people to create a family. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up here. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to step forward? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, no. No?
Stretch.
Oh.[1064.33][1064.33](Laughter) You stretched at the right time. Okay. That being said, I have a motion to close the public portion.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Commissioners' report, who would you like to start, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
We have to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct. Do you want to answer it?
I can answer the grand, the question regarding the Middle Mile grant. Any funds not used would always have to be returned. Any funds that are used and then the project is not completed within the timeframe, we would be responsible, it would be what's called a clawback. Remember, those funds have to be, we would have to, we would have to.
Repay.
We have to repay fed, federal government, and make them whole.
Very good. And as far as the jail, we're still in negotiations, we're very close to the end of this, we're going to be talking about it. I think we have a very good grasp on this, and I think within the next month or so, we'll be able to make an announcement as to what direction we're going to be going. So, that being said, of course, because of negotiations, I wish I can give you more information, but I can't. I know that's not something that you like to hear, but that's something that I just, this is one of those things that just happens. So, that being said, I think we're moving forward on it, and I have a very good feeling about it. Okay. Commissioner Romero.
I don't have anything to say, but I, I know, I know your grandmother, I can say I can say it again, your grandfather, and your grandfather's up there looking down on you every Friday. I want you to know that. And I hope you have a very successful, you know, with us, and with your, and with all we can manage. Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor.
I would just like to say that I had the opportunity to go to the fairgrounds a couple nights. Beautiful, beautiful venue. As I was leaving, the crowd, the line was like extremely long. I've been to the fair many, many times, and I don't think I've ever seen it so long. So, you know, I'm very proud that the improvements were made at the fair, and people had the opportunity to enjoy it. So, I also want to say that I'm very happy to be a part of the Office of the Aging as their Commissioner and the Memory Cafe. I wish you much success with that, I think it's a great, great thing for our county.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Arthur?
I'm ready. Deputy Director. So I want to talk about the fair a little bit as well. So what's funny is, I got a call from Director Soro, maybe two days before the fair, and it tells me that he has a very important meeting, he's not going to be able to do the ceremony, he asked me if I could fill in. So I said to him, I just want to make sure I got this right, you're doing the meeting and I'm going to the fair? No problem, I'll take care of that.[1264.81][1264.81](Laughter) So, so I thought, I think I won that deal.
No, well, I'm moved on.
But, anyway, then, in all seriousness, though, I've been, lifelong resident of Cumberland County, I've been going to that fair since I was a kid, since I can remember. So having the opportunity to open the fair and give some remarks, that was very special to me. My family was there, we go every year, just about every year that I can think of, not only when I was a child with my parents, but now when I have kids of my own. So, very special time for us. The fairgrounds look fantastic, I can't underscore that enough. The grounds look great, all the improvements that have been made look wonderful. I got a lot of compliments from people telling what, how great it looked. And you got to understand, of course, there's so many people involved in making that happen. That fair is the longest running fair in the state, it's the best fair if you ask me, and it was, to have all the people, the Fair Association, Sheriff's Department, the 4H, the Public Works, they did a fantastic job making the grounds, it's truly, so many hands were involved in that to make that come together, which is truly a special event that we have here in Cumberland County every year, and I hope everybody does appreciate that. The only other thing I wanted to mention was Cedarville Fire Department is having their annual chicken barbecue on Sunday. I think there's some tickets floating around out there, but if you have the chance, great calls, and it's great food, so I highly recommend it. That's all I have, thank you.
Get them now, I'm telling you that, get them now, if you want to go, the tickets are, the tickets are, there are, there are a lot left.
Can't wait for that crab fest.
I understand, yes, that's another one. Okay. Commissioner Albrecht.
Well, I've been talking about the fair, I happen to be, lays out the 4H and, and the fair association, and the facility, I congratulate the Public Works, they worked their foot off, they, the facility looked great. I want to say the public PA systems and the music being played across, I could see where a couple people stopped and dancing, which were making comments about this, they felt comfortable with the stop. Today, the day, I got here Friday night and just kind of walked around, watched the horse riders, their competition, it was, it was neat, and the people just sit, this was later in the night, the different displays of the 4H groups, the bunny laps, the chickens, I'm getting an education of what, what is the difference between what bunny or not, I have no idea, but I'm learning, so, and also the petted goat, which was good, so.
Next, we'll go on goat yoga.
Goat yoga. It was fun. And, and every night, and I actually stood in line on a Friday night, and stood in line on a Saturday, I got actually a chance to relax on Friday, on Saturday night, just sit on the picnic tables and just talk with people, just hanging out and relaxing was at that event, and people watch, all the people watch it, so, it was fun. And I do want to compliment the Sheriff's Department and the different agencies that helped, were very, was important, and they enjoyed it, because we had a chance to come to them a few times. The, when I see the large statue of the fire, a bird, the E M S, the fire, almost fall asleep, that's a nice compliment to have while the event is going. So I, it's good, and actually it's a kickoff to 250th celebration of the country, where the first fair established way before our, the, that the country was founded, that's what makes it a beat, probably start off with, and so, that's the, well, that's the, that's the compliment today. And that's, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Yeah, I want to complain about the fair, trying to decide what to eat there. The food was all great, had a good time. I do want to compliment Matt on your presentation, it was great, people don't realize how hard Matt works for this county, does a tremendous job, and we're proud of you. I was able to attend the Culture and Heritage Commission meeting and the Planning and Tourism meeting, and they're both great also, and anybody can make the Puerto Rican festival coming up, please go, there's always good food there, good entertainment, good fellowship there, so, try and make it there, try and make it to the flag raising, so, thank you. Thank you. Well, I applaud everybody that talked, one of the disadvantages of being last. About the fair, just remember, we're not done, we are not done, we are, we have a lot more to do, we are going to make much more improvements, I'm excited about this. The word is getting out, we had an official from Ireland wanting to know all the dates that are open, from now until October, the end of October. So we issued all those dates, because they're being asked, how can, you know, can the fair be used? So, we're trying to make this fair something that the fairgrounds, the year grounds, we want the people of Cumberland County to enjoy, all right, what we have, and one of the greatest things we have is that fairgrounds, and we're not done improving it, so just wait for the future, and you'll see how great it's going to be. We have a lot of ideas, and I want to congratulate the fair, the fairgrounds community, the Fair Association, and just keep doing, you know, keep doing the hard work. Again, I just want to say again, thanks to the sheriff and his department, you did a fabulous job, you really did it, a lot of comments about it, so we appreciate you. I appreciate, we all appreciate all our department heads, we know that you work very hard, you make us look good, and we appreciate that, because sometimes it's not easy to, to say, so we appreciate that. The administration, I can't say enough about our administration and our clerk, we, you know, being in the position that we're at, there's many, many times that we just rely on these individuals right here for almost everything, communications, putting out the calendar, all right, contacting us when, when we almost forget where we're supposed to be, sending us emails, sending us text messages, okay? I can't say enough about our administration, they do a fabulous job, and I do appreciate it. That being said, does anybody else, any of the commissioners have anything else to say? Okay.
Resolution 2025-431, resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Center of Byron Bay Area, Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10, code 4-12, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, matters relating to employment relationship. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
It is not anticipated that there will be any action.
Thank you. To everybody, have a safe trip home, unless you can stay.